Hello. How are you?
Hello Ted.
Hi Rob, how are you?
Good, thanks.
How was your five points meeting?
So Kelly Valencic and Mary Roth gave a presentation about the the byways program and about the historic Lewis byway. And that's about where it was when I had to jump off, so.
Good. Too nice of an evening for us to be doing this, you know. We should be out doing something like taking a walk. I could be walking his dog. Hi Bonnie.
Hello.
How's life in New Hampshire?
Beautiful up here. Hope it is there too.
It is gorgeous here, yeah, absolutely.
Probably a little warmer.
Um, it was not, oh, it was just about sixty today. It was nice.
About the same here.
Tomorrow is supposed to be mid seventies though. Tomorrow is gonna be much.
High sixties, so it's supposed to be gorgeous here tomorrow. So good, because it's supposed to rain Wednesday and Thursday. Nice backdrop Anne Marie. You kind of look like you're in a boat.
I'm trying to think, oh, you know where that is. It's, um, I was trying to think if I took it in Lewis, but I didn't. It's, it's from the sound in North Carolina by the Outer Banks.
Oh, nice. The only issue is you're, you're, all that you see is water, so it's like you're in a boat somewhere.
There.
Hello Andrew, hi Glenn.
Hello everybody.
Good evening. Hello Jim. We're all here, so, alright, it is seven o'clock on Monday, April the twenty sixth, and we are here for the irregular meeting of Mayor and Council. We are having two meetings this month. This is the second of our meetings this month. We had several pieces of unfinished business from our regular meeting which was held two weeks ago, so we're here today to try and wrap up some of that business. But before we get started, I have a few announcements I want to share with everyone. First of all, we had a very successful burning of the bright mighties in the marsh on Friday, and I thank Chad Marsh of the Lewis PD for his efforts to organize that. But I also want to make sure that we thank all the surrounding fire company who stepped up to the plate and the State Forestry Service for having a very successful burning of the marsh. I believe that we found that our previous spray of the marsh has been effective and also that the burning was successful without any incident of damage to any personal property. So again, thank you for everyone who participated in that and for the fact that it was a very safe event. But also note that voter registration closed on Friday, but absentee balloting is still going on and will continue. Our regular election will be held on May eighth at City Hall, and there'll be also an election for Board of Public Works. Both voter registrations have closed. I would note that the voter registration is up significantly for the city. We have fifteen hundred and fifty-nine registered voters now in the city of whom one hundred and sixty-five are those who have never voted in the city of Lewis before. This is quite a change. And I'd also like to make comment about the fact that there was an officer seriously injured on, on, over the weekend as he responded to a domestic dispute in Delmar. Just ask that everyone keep him in it, in your thoughts and prayers as he recovers from this incident. Obviously, we think that we live in a fairly quiet area, but it does, it is a reminder when something like this happens that men and women on, on the police force do of get in harm's way and can be seriously injured. So if you'll keep that in mind. And then we had our meeting earlier this month. We scheduled a public hearing on the rezoning of eleven forty-five Savannah Road for the micro, and the microbury ordinance. And due to some things that have happened at City Hall, we're going to need to reschedule that from the twelfth of May until the twenty, the Monday, the twenty-fourth of May at six P M. So that public hearing that was scheduled for the twelfth will not happen, but it has been moved to the twenty-fourth. So Bonnie, you're off the hook. Here. That's one you won't have to attend.
That, that, that is, I'm watching, just from the peanut gallery.
Okay, well, that's fine. I hope you will do that. So are there any other announcements from anyone in here on the, on the screen that you would like to make or need to make this evening? Hearing none, then I will move on to, I have no additions or deletions to the agenda. We might move on into item E one, which is presentation impossible action when the arrangements regarding the placement of the swing bridge on the city parcel at the end of American Legion Road, three dash three five dash nine point zero zero dash twenty-two point zero zero. You'll recall that this is been an ongoing discussion as the the future of the swing bridges was considered by Dell dot, and some time ago, we had agreed to the placement of the city of the swing bridge as it is removed from the canal on a parcel that's about five acres at the end of American Legion Drive or American Legion Road. And what we have here before us tonight is the agreement with the Lewis Junction Railroad and Bridge Association and also the junction, the agreement with Dell dot for the acceptance of the bridge. There's been a considerable amount of work on this. I appreciate the reference that the Lewis Junction Railroad and Bridge Association has put forth to get this agreement to this point. And I, Anne Marie, if you could bring Randy Voight of, up and if, to participate in this discussion, I think that would be helpful. Glenn, you've done the yeoman's job here of getting this organized. Would you like to comment on the, on the agreement at this point?
Sure Mayor, thank you. So there's, there's really two agreements before you. The first is between the state and the city. Again, Dell dot has agreed to remove the swing bridge and place it at the location the mayor described at the end of American Legion Road. But they pretty much were clear with us that once they do that, I think the state wants to have little to know. I shouldn't say little to know. They want to have no involvement with the bridge once that happens. So the agreement between the city and the state basically says the state agrees to move it to the location. The city will do the necessary things to help the state get it there, prepare the site, and it'll be placed at that location. The second, and that agreement places all of the maintenance responsibilities on the city. It specifically says it's on the city where the city is assigned, but as far as the state's concerned, their agreement is with, with the city. The second agreement is between the city and the Lewis Junction Railroad and Bridge Association. That agreement effectively transfers the maintenance responsibilities to L J R B A. And then it has some provision, a provision that talks about should the bridge need to be removed or destroyed, how that would occur. That's in section twelve. One issue that's come up that probably is worthy of some discussion tonight is that neither agreement speaks to the issue of ownership. So my presumption is that when the state in their agreement says we will place it, we will move it, we will remove it from the canal, and we will place it at the, at the location the city has designated. The state, I presume, assumes that the city is taking ownership of the, of the bridge, but neither agreement again speaks to that directly. We probably should have a discussion about it. So that the agreement that is embedded in the agenda that you have before you, there are some red and some blue markings. The red markings, so we were, we've still been going back and forth a little bit this, with this up until as recently as last evening. The, the red that you see are, is my edits. The blue is the Bridge and Railroad Associations edits. So, but I, but I can't represent to you that all of these have been agreed to at this point. Randy may have something to offer on that point, but I did share with Randy last night that this is the agreement that I'd be recommending to you as the, as the edits appear here. So are there questions on any specifics of the agreement or, or more general parts of it?
Glenn, I would just comment that in addition to this, that there's been a considerable amount of interest on the part of state legislators to support this. Senator Lopez has already committed funding to help fund benches and other signage and things around this. And I, there, there's been close work between the legislatures and, of legislators and the Junction Breakwater Group in, as they move forward on this.
That's right, Mayor. And I'll also comment that I think that the state at this point is intending to move the bridge in July. So we're really at that point where a decision kind of needs to be made on these agreements to, so we can keep it proceeding. So they're on track to do the project in July.
Actually, I think the move will be in September, but they, they would need to let the contracts in July, so.
Right.
That's where they are.
Glenn, I did have one question about the agreement with the L J R B A. In the recitals, it says, among other things, that the state will erect a fence around the swing bridge and install warning signs. And L J R B A will install landscaping. As to L J R B A, the recitals are part of the agreement. But I didn't find anywhere in the contract with the state that they've agreed to erect a fence and install warning signs. Is that somewhere in the contract documents that, that aren't linked to? Because it's not in, it's not in the design document either that I saw.
So it's a good question and to one that I hope Randy can answer. I think that it is in the underlying documents, but, but some of these recitals were taken from a PowerPoint presentation that, that the Railroad and Bridge Association did. So perhaps Randy can point us to the section that will clarify it.
There's also a possibility that Jason Hastings is on. I see J H, you might wanna, is that Jason?
That's usually Joe Hoffner.
Okay.
There is that, the plan sheet that is the second attachment in the, to the agenda does show a proposed metal fence. Um, so the, the the agreement would have Dell dot install it according to the plan, which means that whatever we see on the plan would, would be part of what is part of the installation.
You have sharp buys, Anne Marie. Thank you. That, that takes care of it as far as I'm concerned.
And it is a four foot high black iron fence or black metal fence.
Thank you.
Do you want, uh, excuse me, do you want to actually go through the maintenance agreement at this time, or can we wait until after Randy makes his presentation?
Let's wait till after. Let's invite Randy to go ahead to make his presentation. Randy, you wanna?
Randy should be unmuted, so he should.
Am I here?
Yes, you are.
I don't see myself, but.
Click in your lower corner, in your lower left-hand corner of your screen, you'd probably come to us.
We're left on some screens.
There we are. Alright, um, well, um, really what I wanted to go over today was just a little bit of the history of the bridge, not the bridge itself, but the process, as you know. Or maybe no, the bridge was built in nineteen sixteen and it is a historical structure. We have been working with the city for both the bridge site and the site at Lewis Junction for about two years. We are a young organization. However, we do have a good bit of experience in our ranks. As you may know, one of our board members is the former president of the Fort Miles Historical Association. Another board member is the former executive director of the Wilmington and Western, which is a tourist railroad operation up in the Wilmington area, and he worked there for about thirty years, and he's still doing work there. We do have agreements from the bunker busters who you may know of. They're the folks at Fort Miles who take care of the guns and the bunkers and whatever's needed. And they, they have agreed to, to help us in the maintenance, both at the bridge site and, and of course, this is a future piece, but at the, at the junction itself. We also have a good bit of engineering experience in the group. We have three of us, myself included, who have engineering backgrounds. We do have railroading background. Again, the one gentleman has thirty years with the Wilmington and Western, and I have thirty-five years with C S X. So if you think of that from the standpoint of interpretation, either on the bridge or at the junction, we, we do have knowledge of railroading that we can bring to bear in making those displays hopefully as enticing to the public as possible. I mean, it is a bridge. There's, there's only so much you can do with it. However, the signage that we'd like to put there, the benches, we'd like to put there right along the bike trail. We're hoping that that will help making, make it a very attractive item for the city and for this area. We also have I T experience, and I bring that up, you may say, well, that, that's great. In this day and age, though, any group, and includes a nonprofit, needs an I T presence. We do have a website. We are bringing in donations through that website. We will continue to expand it, but it does give us a presence for both membership news, which we have in there, plus historical artifacts. We have over come over so many artifacts already, and we really have a long way to go. So we're hoping that what we can display is significant as far as right on site, but also we'll have items that are either pictures of or pictures themselves on the website. Funding, okay, again, I want to repeat, we are a young organization, but we have experienced, as Mayor Becker already mentioned, we do have C T F funds already committed from Senator Lopez. In fact, there's been some back and forth today with Anne Marie as to the best way to manage those funds. We also have a agreement with Community Bank to fund the caboose that we would like to put at the junction. And again, I'm not speaking specifically to the bridge here. I'm speaking to, you know, the organization. We have submitted for a grant from the National Railway Historical Society, and we expect to submit other grants to different foundations for funding as we go forward. We have, as I said, brought in donations. We have memberships. So from a funding standpoint, and again, the experience helps, we, we we know where we want to go for funding. We've started to get some of the funding in. So we feel confident that going forward, we will be able to fund what we're looking to do, and we're not looking to go out over our skis and fund things that we, or plan for things that we can't fund. And the last point I want to make is about the collaboration. Any civic organization, and you know, broadly, that's what we are. We are trying to support Sussex County, the coastline, Lewis itself. We are collaborating. We're collaborating with other groups like yourselves. Obviously, we've been in front of you a number of times. Hopefully, we've been clear on what we're planning on doing. We've also worked with Dell dot extensively. I don't need to go into that, but we wouldn't be here if we hadn't been working closely with Dell dot to be able to get them to the point that they're at where they will be letting agreements for the movement of the bridge in May pending this meeting. We've worked with the Lu, the Lewis Historical Society, Jim Abbott, and some of the folks. I worked with a gentleman just last week who's upgrading the railroad display over at the Rollin Center. We've met one-on-one with the library and with Lewis and Bloom, who would be neighbors at the junction to make sure they're aware of what we're doing. We've met with Stango Park. We have updated the Lewis Historical Society on that. So we have reached out to other groups. We do have funding streams that have started to come through and others that we're working on. And we do have experience within the group. So I asked that, you know, as you think about what we're doing here, you keep those things in mind. As far as the agreement itself, I think Glenn did a, did a good job of, you know, walking through, you know, kind of at a high level. I'll simply say, I'm not going to go into the agreement. I will let Glenn and, and counsel do that. That we have had a very good relationship in working with Glenn in that he's gotten back to us timely. Hopefully, we've gotten back to him timely. As we pass these versions back and forth, it's all been collaborative. So I thank you, Glenn, and whoever is supporting you. You've made a lot of so with that, are there any questions for me specifically at this time?
Mayor, I don't have a question, but I've got a, I'd just like to say to Randy and his colleagues what a great project this is and how much I appreciate their, all the work they've put into it.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
I have a question for Rod, for Randy, if no one else does. Maybe this is more for, yeah, maybe this is more for his counsel, but I have a specific question about section eight of the agreement, which has been changed to I think it's fair to say to minimize liability for injury on the premises. I mean, I have a big question about.
For a second, can I make sure which section eight, these have flipped back and forth in numbers. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. On my version, it's section eight is entry on city premises.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, for, I mean, by city premises, I assume you mean the lands of the city, including that, which is encumbered by the bridge.
Yeah, I mean, the first phrase about the property obviously is what's called out in the agreement as the property where that would be.
Right, so I'm not quite sure what city premises that introduces a new concept. I don't know if that's any different than property, but that's a drafting issue for, for council, but I, I have kind of two questions. One goes to the height of the fence, because I don't think four feet is really enough to be an effective barrier from, for people who would want to get inside the fence and get close to the bridge, which is going to be, as I understand it, and maybe I'm wrong about this, but it, it looks like it's going to be a little bit off the ground. Is that right?
Yes, there, there would be a slight rise to the middle and, and both ends.
Okay, so it, it looks like the language has been softened a bit, and I wonder if, if you or your counsel or Glenn or somebody can speak to that, because it looks on mine, the, the changes to the agreement are in blue, which I gather are from the association. So I, I wonder if you could speak to that.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what specifically you're looking to speak.
Okay, so originally it said while on the property or other property of city in connection with this agreement, the association agrees, and it originally said to take sufficient precautions against any accidents, injuries, including death and damages to any person or property during, during such entry. And it was changed to say by, by the association to say, the association agrees to act with due care and diligence for the safety of others and the property of others. That's a, to me, is, you know, as a recovering lawyer, that's a very, very different standard. So I just wondered if, if, whoever wants to speak to it could speak to that, and also and I know this is in the Dell dot agreement, but also as to whether for, how four feet was chosen and whether it's deemed sufficient to, to prevent people from going onto the property.
I don't want to speak to the difference between due care and diligence and the previous without a counsel. I'll, I'll tell you. That was that advice of counsel, but I'd rather them speak to that specifically. As far as the forefoot, the drawing goes back to, to January where the forefoot was there. How it was chosen, I do not know. Whether Dell dot would be able to adjust that higher, we would have to take up with Dell dot.
The, the height was specified by Dell dot, Bonnie, as.
I rec, I recognize it was specified by Delta. But my, and my, then my question is going to be, but it, it, it acted in conjunction with the liability provisions, because obviously if the fence has to be high enough to prevent people from getting in there, or else you increase your liability exposure. So yes, I do recognize that's in the Dell dot provision. It's up to counsel to decide whether or not four feet is enough. I just wanted to get, okay, associations to put on that. So that, that was, those are my questions.
Thank you. Other questions? Right, and I think you had a couple of comments you wanted to make.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. Look, one of mine looks like it's answered in the very end where you have all provisions, so except sections three and four. That just allows you to change the contact people. So that, that's been remedied, but the, the question I had would relate to the removal. We want to get rid of the bridge. It says we have to give a hundred and twenty days of such change. And it doesn't talk about whether the city's on the hook to, to pay for the removal. And it doesn't talk about whether the city's on the hook to to pay for the removal. And also it talks about the fact that the association can recover the bridge. But I think we should give some length of time. You know, once we give the hundred and twenty day notice, we don't want it sitting there for a year, you know, several more years if if the decision is to get rid of it.
Let me take that one at a time and I'll start with the second one, if you would, Andrew. Part of section twelve does say, you know, hundred and twenty days notice. Notify LJRBA and offer LG LJRBA. Reasonable opportunity to recover this swing bridge project at no cost to the city. So that is in there. I don't, I don't know if that directly addresses what you were looking for in that second part.
But if you don't want it, then we have to, and we want to get rid of it, then we as a city have to pay for it is then that's the. Flip side, yeah?
And Glenn, I believe that is the way that this is structured. If the city decided to remove the bridge. And LJRBA decides not to pursue relocation. It would be the city's responsibility to.
Yeah, I think that's the way it would be interpreted, and that goes back to. What maybe an unfair presumption on my part that the city was gonna ultimately be responsible for owning it. Once the state moved it. So it was, I sort of felt as though if we own it, it's gonna. Be at the city's expense to destroy it. However, if if the region. The Railroad and Bridge Association wants to keep it, they have a hundred and twenty days to figure out how to to get that done. I think that's right, Andrew, or council person, it would be interpreted. On us unless council does something different tonight.
Hey, I I just have to say, I'm not really comfortable with that because this, it's not the city that's requesting this bridge. It's this, it's the association that wants this bridge and. We're availing some land for them to place the bridge, but I don't think that it's fair to the citizens of Lewis who aren't interested in having a bridge. To be on the hook if we decide as a city to in the future to get rid of it. I don't know what to.
The only suggestion I would make is that while, yes, Lewis Junction Railroad and Bridge Association is leading the charge. To save the bridge, the bridge will be a valuable addition to the area. Historically and from the standpoint of people going the bike trail, stopping by or stopping off and learning a little more about the history. There's nothing right now or very little that speaks to the railroad history that was just ended three years ago. Little over three years ago now. So there would be value, but I mean, you are correct. It is us leading the charge, but hopefully with the backing of council.
Well, can I, can I pick up on what Andrew started on there, which is? That the the way the city has with organizations that want to have an activity or. Historic monument, have you, it's been consistently, as far as I know. That the city provides the land and sometimes certain services like picking up trash. But the artifact or the activity belongs to the association that wants it. So for example, the overfalls is allowed to be on land pursuant to a memorandum of understanding, land of the city. But the overfalls does not belong to the city, and if the overfalls sank tomorrow, the the city, God forbid. The city would have no liability whatsoever for dealing with it. The same thing is true of the dog park, same thing is true of the community gardens. Same thing is true, I think of the, although I haven't looked at that, or that, I haven't looked at these agreements in a long time, but I think the same thing is true of the. Facilities that are down in Otis Smith Park. So I guess the question I have, just to tack on to Andrew's, is, is the association willing to take ownership of? The bridge and be ultimately or or be ultimately responsible? But what happens to it? Like other organizations with which the party has dealt, the the city has dealt in the past.
Well, I I would say that I would have to take that to our board. I think we would prefer not to. But, you know, we would consider that. And the only reason I say that is up to this point, that has not been our understanding. And I don't want to speak for our group anymore than, you know, one person here can speak for you all. And I apologize if that's, you know, not not the best answer, but I think, you know, that that's what I have to do to be fair to our group as well.
No, that's fine. Thank you for clarification.
I have a couple of questions. Andrew, are you finished?
I am for now, yeah.
Thank you. Randy. Is the bridge. Is the same organization that is going to be responsible for the bridge also responsible for the proposed? Junction. Well, I'm not sure what to call it. I apologize. The proposal for this to be located over by the library. Would that be all under one organization, one umbrella?
Yeah, and let me be clear, at the junction, the junction is a little crowded, so what we would be. Responsible for. And again, none of this is an agreement in place, but what we're looking to own, not own, I should say, to be responsible for is a railroad display. On the track. That's still there at Lewis Junction, a fence surrounding it, displays within that fence. Similar to what would be, what the bridge would be like. But I just want to make clear, there's also plans for adding a quote train station. In closure to the transfer. At the library, that is not us.
I understood that. Thank you very much. But this this MOU that we have in front of us this evening. Does cover each location. Is that correct?
No, it just covered the bridge. There would be a separate. Yeah, and and the one difference.
Okay.
Between the properties is the property where the bridge is going is city property. The junction is Dell Dot property.
Okay, thank you very much. And so the 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 funding piece. Will be, there'll be co. There's gonna be, there's gonna be, if you will, co-mingling of the fundraising effort will be, it will be one pool of money that will fund. And the maintenance of each location. Is that correct?
That is.
The bridge and then also.
Association that owns it and I would say that, yes, the funds would come from. The same place. Obviously, from a budget standpoint, we would have a maintenance budget for the bridge and a maintenance project. Or maintenance budget for the junction, I would expect.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I understood the point that Andrew made earlier, and I'm referring to the MOU document. Item number. Three and four, which identifies the two different parties who would be the point of contact. Andrew, maybe you could explain, you said that that's already been dealt with.
At the very end of the agreement, it says everything should survive except three and four, which is to mean that I take that to mean that you, those might change in the future.
Yeah, the individuals, the individual names. And you could change, you could. Say city manager and and the president of the.
Right. And that's a great suggestion. What I was going to suggest is that each organization has an obligation. To notify the other one when there is a change in personnel, when the president of the association changes or when the city manager. Changes, right, Anne Marie?
You could leave the phone number in there and just keep the phone number the same.
Yeah, that's true. You could do it that way. That's true. The other thing, I have two other points I'd like to make. On page two, number five, independent contractor. I I'd like to, I'd like to see some language included there that would address. Appropriate safety and environmental practices be used by the. Any contractor who or crew, you know, volunteers who work on the site.
I I think that would be fine with us. I mean, we would expect to act in those ways. I'm not sure, and and this is more for for Glenn, I'm not sure section five is where that would be. Section five is specific to the contractors. Or maybe another section that holds us responsible for that. And in section five, the contractor piece would be added, so to speak, but.
It identifies, it describes your association as an independent contractor. And that's, and then also the ability to. I believe it's, you know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, it's something for the legal eagles to work out. And I have one more question, and that is number ten, insurance. When? When will? When will the insurance be in place?
Well, at this time, we do not have any any employees. So the workman's compensation insurance is not required until we have any employees.
Right, but do you, but you actually do anticipate having employees, just not volunteers? Is that correct?
At this time, we do not. This, this was a piece that the city asked to add or include, not add, include, and we don't have any problems with it.
Okay. I remember one of the earlier iterations, there seemed to be. A convergence or mingling of interchange, use of employees and volunteers. Were used interchangeably and. If if that's been resolved, then I'm finished with my questions at this time.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I speak to the question that? Andrew raised.
Please.
On the question of who should pay for the. Relocation or destruction of the bridge. It seems to me that. A nonprofit whom we have given permission to. Operate in the city. Whether it's to have the overfalls or have the dog parkers or what, need some stability. And. The provision that we're referring to, section twelve of the agreement. Gives the city. The absolute right in its discretion to say, on a whim, or for no reason at all. Take that bridge away. I don't think it's reasonable to ask. The LBRJA, I'm still not comfortable with those initials. To take the risk that the city might on a whim or without. A lot of consideration. Put it to huge expense. So what I might suggest is that. We've told the. The association, they've got to maintain this thing. It's historically valuable. It, we've provided the land. It's their obligation to maintain it. And if they fail to maintain it. Then they're on the hook for the costs and and we can exercise our remedy of saying, get rid of it, move it. Destroy it at your cost. But if they've kept their part of the bargain. I don't think we want to preserve to ourselves the right to change our minds at a moment's notice.
And that that might work, Rob, because what I was getting at is just that, if it falls into disrepair and it's sort of to ensure that they are maintaining it. So.
I I would agree with that. That would work well.
I think that is, that's a, thank you, Rob. I think that's a good suggestion. Okay, is there any other further discussion?
Well, can I, can I just ask clarification? That that's fine with me, but we're gonna have to redraft this provision to say what Rob just said. It still doesn't resolve the ownership issue. I think it would be a lot cleaner. If they owned it and like every other organization I'm named. And there'd be a provision there that if it falls into disrepair. And becomes unsightly or physically a menace or or whatever it may be, then the city can can tell them to. Either fix it or. Remove their property.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I I, we we would probably have a concern with that in the sense that. This clause that we're talking about, if we own the bridge, we give the right to the city. To with a hundred and twenty days notice, remove that bridge at their discretion. We own it, you destroy it. I I don't think we want to go.
We'd have to, we'd have to redraft the provision, no question about it. Any, to to do what Rob was talking about, we have to redraft it anyway.
I I agree with that, but I would have problems with this destruction piece in there if we own the bridge. Okay, can we, Glenn, do you feel you have enough information here? You could propose a draft, a redraft?
Let me make sure I understand. So so councilperson Morgan's proposal is that. Kind of so long as the status quo is maintained and the bridge is properly maintained by the association as the agreement anticipates. The city. Should not or will not. On a whim, decide to remove or destroy it, but so long as it falls into disrepair. And that means that LJRBA has not been upholding their side of the agreement. The city at that point can say, it's your responsibility and at your cost to to remove the the bridge.
Glenn, my suggestion is a little bit kinder to the city.
Okay.
Yes, on a whim, we can require it to be moved, destroyed, whatever, but. We can only ask the association to pay for it if they haven't kept it part of the bargain.
Yeah, okay.
So could I raise a practical concern here? If it's fallen into disrepair. The likelihood is because, you know, the association has, you know, lost its. Its mojo or doesn't have the funding to keep it repaired. And in either of those circumstances. The association probably isn't going to have the wherewithal to. To remove it or to fix it or remove it. So how do we want to deal with that practical problem?
Good question.
Is the association in a position to be able to to secure a bond?
We would, we would be happy to look into that, yes. I I don't want to answer that question because that's a very technical question, as you know. I think having a bond, some kind of an surety bond would make sense to resolve this. Given this discussion, you know, Glenn, do you want to read back what you've drafted?
Well, I I haven't drafted something. I've actually fixed section twelve yet. I'll tell you conceptually, conceptually, what I've, what notes I've taken. Just as a matter of housekeeping in section eight, I think the word premises should be changed to property. This was a provision that I think was borrowed from a license agreement and premises is usually used as a term of art in a license agreement. So it should be property in this, in this sort of an agreement. But as a section twelve. My understanding is that the concept is that. LJRBA has certain responsibilities under this agreement to maintain. The lands within the fence and the the bridge itself. And so long as they are doing those things. Section twelve would would remain the way it is if the city can remove the bridge or destroy the bridge, but it would be at the city's expense. However, if the bridge falls into disrepair, and the city wants it to be removed or destroyed. That would be at LJRBA's expense through a bonding requirement that we would include in the agreement.
Correct.
So I I think I can draft that. I don't feel comfortable drafting it as we sit here. If you want to. Consider approving it subject to that, that I could circulate with council, and if there are any objections to the language, we could work through it individually. But. I I don't have the language right now to be able to just insert it.
Do you think you can do that this week yet?
I, yeah.
Would console be comfortable doing that?
That would work for me.
I don't think we've really addressed section eight. Changing premise of the property doesn't, that's nice, but it doesn't go to the substantive issue on liability. And what the standard would be.
I think part of the answer there was, I looked to the indemnif- indemnification clause and that gave me a. I think part of the answer there was, I looked to the indemnif- indemnification clause and that gave me a little bit more comfort going with with their language. And additionally, there's no general liability insurance requirement here because it falls to the city's general liability policy. So I I share the concern to some respect, but I think the indemnifications in some ways marginalize it.
I I don't agree, but it's up to counsel.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie. All right, um, very good discussion here, I'm glad we've had this. Uh, is there a motion then to go forward with uh move approving this agreement subject to the modifications that we've discussed here with Glenn?
We're just talking about the one with the, the agreement with the association, right? We have not tied Del dot one yet. Okay, thank you.
I would so move Ted.
Thank you very much, Rob. Is there a second?
Also, I can.
Thank you, but thank you, Tim. The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I.
All right.
Thank you, Andrew, thank you, Tim. Bonnie, I'll all, any, I'll vote, I, any opposed?
I I'm gonna vote no, because I don't believe that the question of ownership, which is very important here, has been resolved.
Okay, thank you. So the motion carries forward to one, thank you. Okay, so then let's talk about the Del Dot agreement. Are there questions or comments there?
Glenn, are you, have you reviewed it and and the product doc, project documents it refers to? And are you comfortable with it?
I've read, reviewed the main agreement thoroughly. The underlying agreements, I I briefly, I I reviewed, but I wouldn't say at at a at a real in-depth level, but I'm comfortable with it, the agreements working together, require Del not to move the bridge and install the fences and so, so I I I'm comfortable with where we are on the state agreement, yes.
I have a question. Uh, do I, uh, I I apologize if I'm getting into the weeds here. Uh, but do I understand that the bridge is going to be moved by the um marsh side of the trail? And it's gonna be moved down using the trail to the site? Is that what I understand?
I think so, but it's all gonna be on the, on on Del Dot's right of way. Except, and they get it to the, until they get it to the site.
Right, and that's, that's where I'm going with my question, Ted, thank you. Uh, I I wanted to get clarification, that trail, that part of the trail that comes up to the canal is, who owns that piece of the trail?
Hey, uh, that is owned by uh Del Dot.
Del Dot.
Dot Dot owns that, okay. So if it is damaged in this move, they'll, they'll be responsible for that, is that correct?
They, they already anticipate needing to reconstruct a portion of the trail.
Right.
Okay, thank you. That was my big question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Comments?
I, I would suggest that we request that Del Dot make this fence six feet instead of four feet. I don't think four feet is sufficient.
Okay, we can do that.
Well, before we do that, Mayor.
Oh, we ask for bright, rest justification for what they, why they decided the four feet.
Because, I mean, four feet, people can see over. I can't see over a six-foot fence.
It's just a metal fence with slats in it. You can see through it.
I don't know how I see through.
We could request that as part of it. We could request clarification, or they may have other monument, they may have other monuments of this type elsewhere in the state where four-foot fence is perfectly adequate. And if they could provide that information, then, you know, that's, that's very helpful information. We can ask for clarification on that.
Okay.
I'm right about that, right? This is kind of, I mean, I'm trying to find the image which came earlier today. It's, it, this is a, this is sort of a a pickety kind of fence, right, or a?
It's like, it's like, the, it's like a regular iron fence with uh with with vertical pipes.
Right, okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Yeah, but four feet, I mean, a standard fence is normally um forty-two inches, so this is already six inches higher than a standard fence. Uh, and and then, you know, a decorative fence is usually like three feet.
Well, how high does a fence around a pool have to be?
I think it's only four feet.
Is that right? Okay, well then, maybe that is, I don't, that doesn't sound right to me, but.
I think it's, I think it's.
I think it's four feet, but the latch needs to be at fifty-four inches, so typically they're a little taller than four feet to be able to get the latch high enough. They're supposed to, they're, they're supposed to deter people who are only four feet tall.
I think. Okay. We can see clarification on this. Are there other questions or comments about the agreement with Delta? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Del Dot?
Move to approve the Del Dot.
Thank you, Rob. Is there a second? Thanks, Andrew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay, it looks like that's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much. So what I'd like to do now is just, uh, we've had a request that we uh move the presentation from Mark Harris up, and I'd like to bring that up now if we could. So Emery, Randy, thank you very much, we're gonna lose you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you for answering the questions. We'll be back in touch. So Mark's with us, Elmerine, or excuse me, Emery, can you bring him?
Okay, so Mark should be able to turn on his video and unmute now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mark, thank you.
Good evening, let me, let me um turn on the light here so that I'm not totally in the dark.
You have a great view of your neck right now.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, let's see here. There are several other people who've come on board as well.
Yes, we have forty-seven people besides the eleven of us, so we have.
I see what I was just, I was just seeing some names down at the bottom there, okay. Um, hi, thank you for giving me the time. Um, I hope to make this a quick presentation so that we can have some questions. Um, there are several pieces where I will ask if city council would be willing to take up um some decision-making at their next meeting or at the next convenient time. Uh, the Board of Ethics in the past, uh, I've sent out a report, sorry, I've sent out a report to to you all, and I hope you got it. I don't know whether you've had a chance to read it yet or not. Your revision. Written report, yeah. And I would ask that that be made part of the minutes, uh, along with the attachments to it, which are uh, the second of two complaints from each of two um citizens of Lewis. Uh, they gave me permission to share those, uh, because uh they raised some issues that I think we need to address. The uh I've, my intention is not to read the report, but rather to um uh, speak to what gives rise to the concerns and then to make some suggestions uh about a way forward. Is this all right to go this, in this direction then?
Please, go ahead.
Good, okay. Um, the board is in the past only met infrequently, but in the past year and a half, we've had a number of issues raised. Uh, and among them have been four that really uh did not um meet the sort of standard complaint against a specific individual uh which could result in a judgment as to whether or not there'd been a violation of the code. But rather a complaint that was wider than that. Um, the first of these was an anonymous complaint letter which never rose to the level of a formal complaint at all. However, in that anonymous letter, a really interesting question was raised, which we then took up and debated among ourselves and then went to the mayor with. And that was that this, the code specifies that uh no member of city council or anyone running for uh citywide office when they're running can be a member of the Board of Ethics. Um, this anonymous person suggested that it was inappropriate for me as the chair to be both on the Planning Commission and on the Board of Ethics, since many of the issues that were raised were issues that have to do with the work of the Planning Committee, Commission. Uh, I thought that person was right. I have no idea who this person is. Uh, but I thought that person was correct, so I went to Ted and said, I think I need to choose one or the other. And better since you chose me to be on both of those things, that you choose which one I should be on. And so as a result, I went off the Planning Commission and remain on the Board of Ethics. But that gives rise then to a hope that we might change the the code so that it does in fact read uh that you cannot be a member of city council or any of its major um committee, commissions, uh and then names those, the, and and those would be the um Planning Commission, the historical um and what's the name of that thing? H Part, thank you. Um, the Finance Committee or the Board of Adjustment. That those seem to be the places where uh most likely the rubber would hit the road in terms of ethics issues. Um, and that, and that, that would probably keep the lines of distance between the, the Board of Ethics and the regular city government. Um, and so the proposal will be that we, we change that to to meet that situation. Um, we then had two complaints.
Will you go on to the next? Sorry, Mayor, may I ask a question on the last point? Father Mark, to what extent do you think that somebody, let's say, who who was on the Parks and Rec Commission and also on the Board of Ethics could solve that problem by recusing him or herself from consideration of a matter that came before the Board of Ethics?
You certainly can do that. Um, and and recusal um for people who have who where some, where where you're on a commission that is not sort of central core to major uh decisions that involve city finances, for example, uh or uh property adjustments and that kind of thing. Um, that's obviously recusal is one of the options. But um, but the feeling was from this anonymous person that there was so much interplay between um the Planning Commission, city council, and um the decision makers in the city that any issue that would come up involving the ethical actions of or lack of ethical action on the part of city administration would be po- folks that I would likely be fairly cozy with if on the Planning Commission. You see, I, I mean, there's a kind of a the core committees of city, of the city government are all sort of interlaced with one another in a way that is is more it's got greater depth to it. I'd have to recuse myself a lot, for example. Um, at least that was the thought. Um, recusal is always an option, and if we didn't, decided not to go in the direction of changing changing that rule, that would be a way to go. I thought, I thought the um, the person who made the objection was making a very valid point, certainly in my case, um, being on the Planning Commission at the same time. And so I thought that was inappropriate distancing. So does that, I hope that makes some sense. Uh, also, Rob, just for, just for clarity's sake, here I'm Mark.
Okay.
Okay, not father. So the second uh set of concerns we had, there were two um complainants um uh who raised in their complaints issues which the Board of Ethics um decided that we're not going to pursue. But there were issues that they raised that we believe need to be pursued. Uh, in the first instance, um uh, a com- a set of complaints from Alicia Jones. In those complaints, she noted that there, there was an apparent lack of diversity in the committees and commissions of the city. And believe that that was uh in a in a more systemic way, part of the problem that she felt was not being addressed appropriately, having to do with two actions by the city, one involving the renaming of Fourth Street and the other involving um the, the net real uh situation. We didn't, this is not to go into any of the weeds having to do with either of those cases. This has to do with the fact that she raised an issue, which I believe is legitimate and needs to be addressed, and furthermore, I understand is, is being actively talked about in terms of trying to address it. But we wanted to signal that, that in these complaints, an active issue arises that has to do not with the ethical shortcomings of a given individual who could be complained about, and therefore you could then issue a violation. But rather a complaint about the way in which the city government is run as a total, as a thing, as a system, right? Um, and that there is a lack of attention to a core value of the city, uh namely diversity. Um, and I, we thought that was a legitimate concern and believe it needs to be addressed and uh hopefully speedily, uh that that's some form of action to address and deal with the issues about diversity could be raised. Okay, I'm speeding right along, stop me when you're ready, all right, but I'll, I'll go to the next piece, which is, uh, also there were two complaints raised by Rick Quill uh in which, in the midst of many other issues, many of whom you may be aware of, you may be aware of, having to do with property. Um, he believes that in um some um essentially biased way, uh, he has been singled out by the, by the way in which he's been treated by the city. And that that constitutes um a bias against him as a person, not by a given individual as much as by the whole way in which the structures work and all the parts in it. Now, an item like that, which is about sort of systemic bias, is not easily handled by something like the Board of Ethics, because deep into the weeds in the Board of Ethics, the assumption is there is a complaint and there are specific people who are complained about, who therefore are individually named in being uh or accused of being in violation of the Code of Ethics. This is more nebulous than that. The question that arri- arose for us was, where does Rick Quill's complaint land? Obviously, on one level, it lands in the, in the political world of well, if you don't like administrations, you change those, and if you, you know, you vote people out, you vote people in and all that kind of thing. But when a person makes a statement that, that um uh, the, the system seems to be rigged against him, that, and that therefore there's a bias against him, then that raises um and in, a question that really needs to land someplace besides just, we can't deal with that this way. It's gotta just sit out there as a complaint. So we, so there was some conversation among us about the possibility of, um, establishing something like an ombudsman, uh, for the town. A person who receives complaints and helps the, the person making the complaint find a place for it to land. Um, and we believe it would be, uh, an important thing for the Marin City Council to be able to set apart a bit of time or energy from some of its members to explore what it would look like to have someone in the city whose job it was to, to receive complaints that don't fall easily into the Board of Ethics camp, but nonetheless are issues where the person is complaining about the ethical character of the city. So there's that. The last piece I had in my report were two small pieces having to do with changes that I believe need to be made in the code. Uh, the one is that the, the code presently um, has at the very end of, um, um, section nine, section nine nine. Um, the code makes the assumption that anyone who is in violation of the code is presumed to have committed a misdemeanor. The problem with that is that with that presumption, the person who made the complaint or we as the, as, as the Board of Ethics or you as the City Council could in fact take that to the judicial level and have the person fined or imprisoned. Okay, so suppose then we as the Board of Ethics said that somebody was in violation of the code. But we weren't going to pursue that with the state. But it turns out that the person who made the complaint feels like it should go somewhere and says, according to the code, this person is committed of a, a, a misdemeanor, was assumed to have committed a misdemeanor, and we are going to be sure that that gets to the prosecutor for the for this, for the state. Uh, we don't, we think that that is, um, that needs to be unwound and either needs to be unwound by revising that in some fashion or simply dropping it. It already is the case in the code that if, if the Board of Ethics feels that there has been a violation of the law, we're required to let the law know about it.
Mayor, may I speak to Mark's point on that? Mark, you, that's a very good point. You touched on something that we've discussed from time to time. Our code is, is rife with, with, uh, provisions that seem to require people to be fined or imprisoned for trivial offenses. And a breach of ethics is not a trivial offense. Nevertheless, it, it shouldn't be automatically required to happen. Um, I'm hoping that the council gets a chance to rework all of the penalty provisions. But there's no reason to delay on that one because it, it needs special attention anyway. But we, we have a lot of work to do on the penalties in the code.
Thank you. That's, um, that would be very helpful. Um, the other piece of the code that, um, let me just see whether I can find the note here. Um, yeah, the, the, the reference to, uh, the listed persons who can't be members of the Boards of Ethic, Board of Ethics. Uh, I would really like that to be addressed. I, I think I hear Rob's question. And it's a good one, which is why can't this just be done by recusal? But I, but my sense of the, the spirit of this particular complaint was that, um, in a small town, city government is already uh, in the hands of a fairly small number of people in a fairly small town and so the Board of Ethics is not very far away from friendships and engagements and um, the gnarly stuff of living in a small town with all the other people who were involved. And, and, uh, because of the peculiar role of the Board of Ethics, um, it seemed like it was, it was right to say that at least membership in the kind of core committees of the city. And by core, I think primarily the, the committees that have to do with finance or property. That, that it might be useful to in fact say, no, the person can't serve on those committees. And if that's the case, then we would need to change the code in that, that respect as well.
Mark, thank you. Uh, very good comments and I think this is a topic that we've talked about for several, uh, months off and on and I think
Do you have a couple of questions for? It's okay. But here's an, an example of the ombudsman person. How would you envision that working? Would, would that be complaints that would come through to the Ethics Committee that you would then assign over to the? Or that would come, who, who would decide which complaints go through the ombudsman person?
It's a good question. Uh, certainly there would be some complaints where, where something came to the Board of Ethics. And we've, and we determined that there was no reason to go forward with an investigation. But that the person making the complaint, just as they have in these cases, have raised issues which need to be addressed somehow. We're not equipped to address them and not frankly terribly interested in spending a huge amount of time doing that because we didn't see that as our particular role. So yes, uh, some complaints that came to the, the, the Board of Ethics would get uh, if they were not satisfactorily dealt with there, would get passed on then to, um, this, this person. It might very well be that some of the things that, um, you as members of council or the mayor get where, where the person is making a legitimate observation complaint question. Want to know what to do now, need some guidance about where to take a particular concern. And it might be that the person then becomes kind of a guide for that person in terms of saying, you know, you've come to the city with this, but I think now that I've looked at it, that it might better be something taken up on a state level or, or I, I'm, I'm sort of envisioning a variety of kvetches of one sort or another where people, um, Ted, Ted and other members of the, the council, you all get, um, a variety of complaints that have, you know, that, that don't easily land anywhere and you just have to help people talk them through. Some of those might be complaints that you say, you know, it would be good if we spoke to the ombudsman.
I think one of the things
Explored options, yeah.
I think one of the things about ombudsman that it's been my experience is that they're usually looking for timely intervention. Uh, so I think added ombudsman, your latter comments, Mark, might be, uh, things start there uh, or get referred there and then end up going beyond that. So.
And I, I just had a couple more. Um, just touching on, uh, and one, you, you, you might be able to comment on the other. I'm, I'm sort of directing towards us and the, the, the city. And I see that Rick and Chief are on the call as well, but with respect to the diversity piece within the committees, you, you mentioned removing or not availing yourself the chance to be in multiple committees. Did you discuss whether that's a good policy all around in the city, whether individuals should only be serving on one committee?
No, I did not. I had, I think I had better sense than to try to do that. Um, because, uh, I don't, I don't have to go out and explore and find the people to do the work. I mean, that's one of the other issues. Um, um, there's plenty of talent, but there's also, um, only a limited amount of time to, to do that. So I, I don't, I don't want to make any, well, my, my thought would be not to go in the direction of making this a universal kind of thing that nobody can serve on more than one committee, but, um, uh, but rather that this is specific to this concern, this issue.
In fact, we have several of our committees that require membership of another committee be on that committee for the Planning Commission, for instance. Uh, you know, we have to, uh, we have some, uh, some commit, you know, some assignments on those committees require someone to be from another committee.
And, and I guess the second part of that would be, you know, what, what we could be doing as a city to encourage more diverse hiring practices or, or expanding the, the reach of our, of our searches.
It's been an ongoing discussion that Amberie and I have been having, so.
And I think how, how we can facilitate that or if we've already, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to add to what Ted just said, I mean, I, I know that the issue of diversity and on the city staff, both civilian and, um, uh, uniformed has been a topic of discussion for easily two or three years.
Right. The thought was that, that, uh, a fairly timely public discussion ends and attempt at a solution needs to be done. Yeah, I think that, um, the complaint that was raised had its, at, at its core, uh, this as one of the problems that, that was perceived. Um, and that, and I think that means that we need to pay attention more public and more publicly sooner than, than the continued conversations. Right, alone. Okay, um, I had one other piece that, that, that I, I wanted to also throw into this, which is a number of these complainants, uh, have felt that the Board of Ethics did not do justice to their concerns. And felt, uh, that we fell short of what it was we were supposed to do or ought to have done. Uh, there's nothing in the code that says anything at all about an appeal from the Board of Ethics. I think that needs to be addressed and, um, I think Glenn may have to be the one who does that because I don't have the biggest idea how to approach that one. Except that I, I want to signal that, that I think it's appropriate that if there's decisions made that involve a person's potentially being fired or they're being, uh, removed from office. Um, and that happens if, if something goes through the Board of Ethics. That there needs to be some, uh, at least an arrow that says if you disagree with this, here's where you appeal it, right? And we, we don't have to spell it up, but sort of point the point people in the direction of where appeal would happen.
I think these are all topics. Yeah, thank you, Mark. I think these are all topics that we'll come to as the, as we formulate the new council in, in the, in our May meeting. I appreciate your bringing these to our attention. And we'll, uh, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do, but, uh, these are all things that are good to work on. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate you and the Board of Ethics members' work that you've been doing, and I appreciate your time in putting together this report and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Great. So thanks again, Mark.
Thank you.
We'll go back to item E two now, which is presentation possible on action or on a reconsideration of the contract award for rehabilitation of the canal front park tennis and basketball courts as it relates to the court surfacing. As you recall, we had, uh, selected a finish, uh, then there was questions raised about, uh, it and how, how it would relate to both tennis and pickleball, uh, usage. And I know Amberie's gone out and looked at a few tennis courts and things and um, I think some members of council as well, and Charlie's here uh, to talk to us a little bit about where we are. Charlie, you want to bring us up to date? I know we approved the one surface, but now we've had some questions.
It was at our, at the council's March meeting that we presented our recommendation, uh, to award the contract to ATC Corporation in the amount of a hundred and forty, two thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, which included the, uh, premier court system. As, as you recall, we had a bid alternate for the premier court system, um, uh, which is a, um, polyurethane composite system. Um, the base bid was the, um, just reworking, overlaying the asphalt and, um, fixing the cracks and overlaying the asphalt over top and then color coding the tennis courts. And GMB had recommended going with the premier court surface just based on, um, you know, numerous contacts we had made with other users of the court and some visits that we made. Um, I think some issues came up in the meantime after that meeting, um, which, uh, council had actually, um, approved that recommendation. So we got the, the contract out to ATC Corporation, but they haven't done anything with it yet. Um, so council can still decide to go in either direction, whether it be the premier system or the asphalt system. Some issues came up after the meeting in March about other people's experience with well, there was some discussion about dead spots and air pockets related to the premier system. And there were concerns, um, I'm not sure if there was actual experience, but there were some concerns with the actual bounce of I think mainly pickleballs, but also a little bit with tennis balls. So GMB looked into it, um, we, we went back down to Ocean City. They have nine different tennis courts there that have pickleball courts all lined inside them. And they have a basketball court that's all using the, uh, premier system. And we did an extensive evaluation and really could find no dead spots, um, in our evaluation. And then in discussion with the Parks and Recreation Commissioner, um, you know, he mentioned that they've never had a real complaint regarding dead spots on any of those ten courts or the basketball court. My personal experience is that with basketball, with the basketball, you can't feel a difference at all. Tennis balls, it's almost no difference between asphalt and the premier surface. The pickleball, you feel a very, very slight difference, which you might expect because if you know what a pickleball looks like, it's very similar to a wiffle ball. So it's light. And it probably will react to very small differences in what the court surfaces are. But, you know, I'm not an expert at pickleball, but I didn't notice that when I was knocking the ball around that it affected the play of the game in any way. Um, and I didn't really notice all that much difference in, say, the height of the bounce off the, either of the courts. They had one court on one hundred and twenty-sixth street, one hundred and thirty-sixth street that had an asphalt court right beside the premier court. So you could easily go back and forth and get a sense of the difference. And I would say that there's a very slight difference with the pickleball between asphalt and, um, the premier system. And like I said, I, I, I felt no difference at all with basketball or the tennis balls. I'm sure if you play a lot of tennis, you would feel some difference on the court surface in terms of the bounce of the ball. Um, I, you know, again, I, I, I'm probably going out on a limb, but I know there are a whole lot of different tennis courts, systems, surfaces. And I feel like tennis players are probably, you know, used to playing on all those different courts. And certainly the bounce of the ball off the premier system didn't affect the level of play of tennis, in my opinion. Um, and I just, I guess I want to refresh council's um, memory with regard to the maintenance. And one of the reasons why we really recommended the premier system is that if you go all the way back to the beginning of the tent, this tennis court project in Lewis, the real the real catalyst was where the are the cracks that are that are on the courts right now. And those cracks, no matter how well you install or fix them and then put asphalt back on top, are going to reflect back through over time. You will not have that same problem with the premier court system. Um there are actually, the cracks are repaired in exactly the same way. You put crack um seal it inside the cracks and then put a polyester mesh over top of it that bridges it the same way you would do with an asphalt you would do for the premier court. But because of the nature of the premier court, it being rolled out over the cracks, you just don't have the cracks reflecting back up through the premier court like you will with with um the asphalt over time. So I I think you're gonna have regularly scheduled maintenance costs that are predictable. And if you maintain it every six years, like the product requires, you would have, you know, a twenty five year guarantee um on the product. So we just feel like there's a lot of advantages with regard to the maintenance and not the not having the problem of cracks reflecting back through the court. The the asphalt court. Um, you know, I guess that's all I have in terms of what we've discovered. We did reach out to City of Milford. Um they're getting ready to install it on a basketball court. They don't have it installed yet, um but next month they'll have it installed. Um it was interesting, they feel like it's the top of the line surface as opposed to just going back in and creating an asphalt basketball court. Um they felt like the premier system was the top of the line. And we did notice that Wolf Run has it. We couldn't get in or talk to anybody at Wolf Run, but the courts look good. And that that's another thing about the premier is that the courts always look good. They don't ever look, you know, like they're, you know, in need of um sprucing up. They always look brand new. Um and that's a real, that's a real nice feature as well. I guess that's all I have. I I we can go either direction, whatever the council's desire is. With regard to this, whether you go with the premier system or just o- overlay with asphalt. But I, you know, I do want to point out that I did not see, we did not see a whole lot, or if any difference in the play of the balls and the courts are holding up well. They have ten different courts down Ocean City that some of them have been there more than fifteen years. And um, you know, as long as they're maintained, they're holding up well.
Thank you, Charlie. The questions from the table?
You mentioned the, oh, go ahead, Tim. Sorry.
No, please go ahead. I'll I'll hold.
You mentioned the fact that you the the it has mostly to do with the base surface and that that's what I've heard is true if you lay the premier court that if if the under surfaces cracked and that's where the dead spots occur.
Um yes.
So
Yeah.
you wouldn't you have the same problem then with the premier court versus just the traditional asphalt? It was both both areas seem that they're good, that's that the cracks are there and then originally that's where the problems are gonna continue to present themselves.
Well, what what we've discovered in in our, you know, discussions with with Ocean City is is that that would be true, that you could have dead spots located where the cracks are. But if you repair those cracks, that there are no dead spots that we were able to find. We checked a lot of different places where the cracks were and where the seams were. And we couldn't find any dead spots and the fellow that runs their parks and has done it for years also said that they they don't have any dead spots like that at cracks. If they were to occur, Andrew, I I agree that that's where it would where it would happen.
It 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 may I jump in here, Andrew, interrupt you for a second and follow up real quickly, question real quickly. Charlie, it with this uh premier surface, uh are are you, did you just describe that with the premier surface that there are still some cracks that are uh found in those Ocean City courts? Did you, is that what you just said?
No, 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 there aren't, there are no cracks. There are, when you start out with a premier surface, there are probably cracks on the underlying asphalt, similar to what we have.
Right.
But those cracks are repaired with as uh acrylic emulsion um injected into the cracks and then a polyester fat mesh fabric that bridges over it. And then you lay the premier system on top of that.
So, right. And what what confused me was, I thought you described, I I
What I said, go ahead. That the the cracks do not reflect back through the premier surface like they probably will do over time with just an asphalt overlay.
Okay. Oh, just the, I thought you would describe looking for cracks or looking at cracks. And that's why I was confused there. Thank you.
Sorry for that.
Andrew, I apologize. I'll return it to you.
No worries. No, no. I I really didn't have any other questions. Um most of the feedback I've heard is that it's they they prefer to stick with the status quo of the asphalt, but um.
I have a question. Uh Charlie, uh the courts that you visited in Ocean City, uh were all those courts outdoor courts or were any of them indoor courts?
The ones that we looked at were all outdoor.
And uh do you have any idea how all those courts were in Ocean City? How long those surfaces have been in in play, so to speak?
First premier system that they put in, which is on their biggest um tennis court area down at sixty fourth or sixty first street have been in fifteen years. And then all their other courts have been kind of scattered over the last fifteen years.
And and those ones that were put in fifteen years ago are, they've not needed, they've required maintenance, but they have not required to be replaced. Is that correct?
That's true. Yes, correct.
There's a twenty five year warranty, so as long as you perform the maintenance, if if there's any defect, it they have to come in and repair it.
Right. And but they've not had to go in and make any repairs. Is that correct? The
No, they just maintained it every proven to be They maintain it every six years.
Charlie, in the
So once every six years, the Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Tim. I'll wait till you're finished.
No, I'm finished. Go ahead, Rob.
Okay, Charlie, the
And I am finished. Please go ahead.
Since the um the risk seems to be of of soft spots developing and that they're going to develop along the cracks, how how good, what are we doing to the underlying asphalt to make sure that it will be as secure from the development of cracks as possible? What what is the process for the the mill and overlay? Uh how long lasting will that be underneath the premier surface?
Well, we're doing the exact same thing that they did in Ocean City where they inject acrylic emulsion, similar to what we do on cracks in roads. But in addition to that, we're putting um polyester fabric that's four and five inches wide to bridge the crack over top of that acrylic emulsion. Um so that's what we do to re- repair the cracks. We breathe, we inject them, we fill them up, and then we bridge over top of them. And then um another thing that the contractor is required to do is um they'll they'll fill any low spots in the asphalt um with filler. If there is any, they need to check for that.
And is the quality of their work on the crack ceiling guaranteed for twenty five years also if we do the maintenance?
Yes.
So if soft spots develop, it's theirs to fix, whether it's in the premier surface or underneath?
As long as you do the maintenance every six years, yes.
Thank you.
Charlie, this message we're talking about sounds not dissimilar from what we did back in Bay Breeze when we we found that unstable surface. Is that right?
It is, except for we use a very, very high grade glass mesh fabric there. Um because the cracks were that bad and the underlying soils were not great either. This isn't that level of mesh fabric, but it's a similar process, yes.
Okay, we've had no problems with that. That's been down what, seven or eight years, I believe?
Yes, that's six, seven years now.
Okay. All right. Council, uh we have, you know, with a lot of questions here. I think we've had a lot of good discussion. What is your pleasure going forward? Should we stick with the premier system that we had originally approved? Or are we going to entertain a change to it? What is your pleasure?
Part of our thinking in going to premier at the additional cost was that we have this excellent warranty, but also there's a little bit kinder on old knees and ankles.
Mm hmm.
And um based on what Charlie has found, it's it may be that where soft spots have been have developed, it's because the quality of the underlying surface wasn't well prepared. And it sounds as though we're confident that it will be in our case. So I would propose we we do nothing and that way, if I'm not mistaken, our selection will stand of premier. And when the weather hits the right temperature, our contractor will start work.
Okay. Is there a second to that proposal? Bonnie? Thank you. Here we have a motion in a second, all in favor of leaving the premier contract stand as it is currently approved. All in favor? Any opposed? Tim, how are you voting?
I I'll vote, I'll vote for it. It's it's okay. It's okay. I'm voting for it.
Okay, Andrew, where are you?
I I voted against it. I'd rather go dance with the devil, you know.
Okay, and I'll vote for it. So you have a four to one decision here. Uh, okay, so before we go on to the next item, I want to back up a moment. Uh I did not see that there were two hands, three hands raised when we were having the conversation with Mark Harris. And I believe we had Alicia Jones uh and Trina and uh Rick, uh who had their hands up. So if Anne Marie, can you bring Alicia in maybe and vote?
Just, uh Alicia should be able to unmute.
Yeah, I see she is now. She is unmuted. Alicia, go ahead.
Okay, there were, there were two things I wanted to say. One is you've been discussing since I've been here on West Fourth Street, the subject of diversity for the last four or five years, and nothing has changed. Number two, as I continually point out, the Lewis African American Heritage Commission, to my knowledge, is the only integrated commission. Uh and there was ample um ability to find other people in the black community who had worked on West Fourth Street to become a part of it. Many of the, as far as I know, the two white people who were named had nothing to do with it. The other thing is Mark brought up um the overlap. I I think it's almost incestuous to allow members to serve on one or more committees. One, I think it's incestuous. Number two, it also reduces the ability to diverse, to add diversity to a particular commission. And that's the end of my remarks.
Thank you very much, Alicia. I think we uh we're, we'll work with this. Thank you. Uh Trina, did you have something you wanted to add? Can you bring Trina?
Trina, Trina should be able to talk now.
Okay, Trina, thank you.
Thank you. Um I heard that um Mark had mentioned about a a possible way to appeal. Um and I thought the next level would have to be appeal to the state when it, but I'm 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 not sure. But I'm just mentioning that because I thought that was the next step. If if some somebody wasn't satisfied with the process, the next level would have to go through the state's ethics appeal.
Generally, that's right, Trina, except it wouldn't be through the state ethics. It'd probably be to a state court that would decide a a question of law. Um I think all Mark was saying is that we should spell out in the code what state court um is the appropriate jurisdiction to that would hear the case.
All right, thank you. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, and then Rick.
I think he's gone.
Yeah, I don't see him.
Uh it looks like he has left. Okay. All right. Well, again, I apologize for not having seen the those uh those three people in the chat. Okay, then moving on to item E three is presentation of possible action on a renewal of the hunting license for the Great Marsh Associates. Richard Collins is the president. Rich, Rick Collins is with us tonight. Um and we had this on our agenda last month. We had a couple of questions. Uh this has been a longstanding relationship with this group. Uh and uh this was a a new a renewal that has come that he had reached out to us and asked us to renew. Uh and uh we postponed decision because we had a couple of questions that had come in. Uh Rich, you're with us. I know you and I've talked about the fact that you use this for duck hunting and that others use it uh as well, but that you only are using it for duck hunting. Would you care to comment further?
Sure. Uh this started, I think, probably, I'm going to wild guess, twenty five, thirty years ago. And uh it basically, we have leased the marsh just for duck and some goose hunting. Uh pretty much anything else, anybody else, anyone can do. Um there's also an area where anybody can duck hunt for free. Uh and then um in return, we provide the liability insurance for the town. And uh and our management, you know, we try and as best we can, I mean, it's a pretty big place and it's twelve months a year. Uh to, you know, to make sure that laws are followed and uh especially when it comes to waterfowl hunting. So I don't know, we've had a good relationship with the city for many years and uh and hopefully uh uh the lease, the leases do uh expire September thirtieth and we were required to request renewal as per the terms of the lease uh six months prior. So that's a reason for coming, for coming to you now.
Thank you very much. Questions from the table?
Mayor, I've got a a couple of questions. Rich, the the lease requires us a certificate of insurance. Has that been taken care of?
Oh, yeah, we do that every year and you should have one now.
Great. And the uh the increase you suggest, um I ran the inflation numbers from the last ten years and it's just about right on. So that works for me. One other question. Uh you you use non lead shot. Is that right?
Correct. Waterfowl, it's illegal to use lead shot for waterfowl hunting. Correct.
Thank you very much.
Are there other questions from the table? Tim, did I hear you? Did you, Tim, did I hear you ask a question?
No, I have no question.
Okay.
No.
There are no further questions. Is there a motion regarding the approval of this lease? With the increases as noted.
Also move.
Okay, we have a motion from uh Rob and a second from Andrew. Hearing no further questions, uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. I truly appreciate it.
Rich, I appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we can move on to item E four, which is presentation of possible action on ordinance to amend the Lewis Municipal Code, Chapter one sixty seven, streets and sidewalks, Article two, maintenance and repair. Uh this has been a discussion that we've had uh along with the Board of Public Works and regarding street breaks and and how they are being repaired. I think as you drive our streets, you will find that and, and how they are being repaired. I think as you drive our streets, you will find that several street breaks have been made and when they've been repaired for in-ground utility replacement or repair, that the substrates have not been properly compacted. And the result is that we have sinking spots in our streets that create a lot more demand for rehabilitation of streets as they continue to go along. This ordinance would address that, requiring that anyone proposing to break the street for a repair would need to get a permit and would, they would have, be subject to inspection for, as the compaction was made of, after the repair had been made. Charlie, do you want to add anything to the, what, what, how you would administer this? Since I think we would look to you and your firm to monitor the inspections, is that correct?
Actually, we've talked about having the building officials do the inspections.
All right, fine. All right. Emery, is there anything you'd like to add to it?
Um, no, we did, we did talk about this at the meeting a couple of weeks ago and there were some issues brought up. So the, the version of this that's in your packet has the changes highlighted so that you can see where we've made changes since the last meeting.
Okay, and I note that we have Press and Darren on. Either of them would like to comment. If you'd raise your hand, we'll bring you into the, into the meeting to discuss your questions.
While they're coming on, is the, is the idea that we charge just for street breaks rather than by footage or otherwise? It's just because of the, the number of visits from the inspectors? Is that?
Yeah, so, so typically, the, the way a street break permit will go is that they're going to cut and the, the, one of the, the attachments to this include the details of how wide you need to cut when you do the street break. But they're really doing it to install their water service or their sewer service. So it, it's, it's not going to be linear, you know, running parallel with the street. It would be perpendicular to the, the street line. So you're talking, Charlie, am I right that it's six inches?
Yes, six inches outside of the, well, it's actually, it can be, it depends on the size of the pipe, but then you also have six inches on either side of the trench to, for the bridging of the asphalt.
So, and, and that's one of the things that I think has not been properly done with some of the, the cuts that have been done in the past.
This would also apply to any natural gas installation that involves street breaks as well.
Right.
Can I just, can I just add that the reason this is important is that the problem with multiple street breaks that haven't been properly done has led to the city having to repave streets at considerable expense. So the idea here is to make sure that the, the street breaks are done correctly so that that expense with the street repaving is eliminated or at least forestalled.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask, Emery?
I have a couple of questions.
So go ahead, Tim. Rob asked first, go ahead.
Well, sorry, Tim. I'll, I'll try to be quick. Emery, would you tell us what the first, in 167-4, starting in line 27, what that's getting at, what problems that's seeking to solve?
Are, are you talking about the use of the manual on uniform traffic control devices for a maintenance of traffic plan?
Yes.
So those are the more heavily used roads. And we want to make sure that if, if people are disturbing those roads and diverting traffic, that they're doing it properly. That they're not just, you know, putting out a cone and being done with it.
Okay, and then a, a related question on that chunk. It says they'll meet the requirements of the uniform traffic control devices as agreed upon with the Lewis Police Department and City Building Department.
Yes.
What if they don't agree? It seems to me they both report to the city manager. So might it not be the city manager in consultation with the LPD and the city?
It certainly could be. I mean, I, I, I think it's the, as it relates to the traffic diversion, the building department's going to defer to the police.
And who's going to be doing the agreeing? Is that the contractor has to agree with?
Yes.
Okay. And I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Tim, you had some questions?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much. I want to clarify, this ordinance actually would be applicable for new work as well, would it not? That is, for example, if a, there's an empty lot and that empty lot has no services to it presently and we need to put in sewer, need to put in water, so, and electric. There would be, this, would this ordinance apply? Okay, if that's the case, then I would suggest, I would suggest this not be described as a maintenance and repair. I think this, it needs to be inclusive of new installation work as well because new installation is different than maintenance.
This is the section of the code that it's in and it's maintenance and repair of streets and sidewalks. So this is where this takes place, there's already a street or sidewalk in place and they're disturbing it to install services. If it was, for instance, a new subdivision, that whole development process is, is different. So this is, so this is how.
Right.
Right, but this is maintenance and repair of the streets. So that, that's why it's titled that.
I think what Tim's concerned about is that, you know, if you have, like, you have a subdivision of a parcel that's already developed and, you know, that's a new street break that it's not a repair, it's actually installing new service.
Right, but what it's saying is if, if you cut a sidewalk, it's, it's about maintaining our infrastructure. The streets are already there. So that, I mean, that's
Oh, I understand.
The section, I mean, I guess the question is if we're going to call it something else, it's, it addresses more than just this permit issue.
I, I understand. I guess what I'm, that's true. And I guess what I'm suggesting is there value in breaking out new installation work from maintenance work? And because I think this is, when I read this document, it seems to me that the intent here is to address emergency repairs. You know, to capture the activity when there is a fault, a break in a water line, possibly a electric fault where you need to actually disturb the road surface. Is that not correct? I mean, that could be covered under the.
This, it, it could be, but it's, it's anytime you cut into a road. It, it's anytime that you cut into, to the, the street or the sidewalk. This is the repair that's required to go with it and the permit.
Right. Okay, well, I.
I think that's covered in 167-5. I think that's covered in 167-5.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I've made my point and we can take it or not. First of all, Emery, thank you very much for the changes that you made from our first conversation a couple of weeks ago. I note them and I appreciate the effort that was made to get them included here. I do, I do want to suggest that we need to include the language about restoration. And we need to, should include what we mean by restoration and the level of restoration that we expect. And that includes, for example, once the construction is completed, that we expect the area to be what I'll call broom swept. You know, that all the loose gravel is removed from the site. It's not put in the gutter. It's not put in the, in the drain, but it's actually swept, picked up and moved off-site. That's not included in here. The other thing that I would suggest is that there is, there are times when direct boring is done with, now this is, this is primarily applied to new installation work where the road itself might not be disturbed. The road bed itself might not be disturbed, but the right-of-way will be disturbed. And this permit, this language does not address that. Was that intentional or do you capture that someplace else?
It, it does cover it. Charlie, do you want to address that?
Who was it again? Say it again, Mr. Richard.
I'm talking about the areas that are within the right-of-way that might be disturbed by the construction work. And this seems to, the, the way I, when I read this ordinance, seemed to address only the asphalted or possibly the concrete surface, but I think most of them are all asphalt. It seems to address that area of the right-of-way, but not the, the footage, you know, that might be in turf presently or it might be a drainage swale. And we would want to make sure that drainage swale is restored.
In, in one, i- if you look at lines 43 through 46 under permit required, it starts, "It shall be unlawful for any person, firm or corporation to dig into, open or excavate in or under the bed of any street, road, highway, lane, alley or sidewalk, curb, gutter, public property or other public way in the city of Lewis." So it, it kind of hits it all right there.
Yeah, I, I agree there, but it doesn't, I'm just concerned about the restoration piece of it. Making sure that that is addressed in this document. That's all.
So councilperson in one, in section 167-7, the second half of Part A, says upon completion of the work, "Every such person, firm or corporation shall fully fill any such opening or excavation so made and shall immediately repair and restore the street or way disturbed thereby to its original condition or as good condition as was previously there too." So I think the, the restoration portion is already in this section of the code.
Okay, and you're satisfied that that, that language is, is tight enough? Is that correct?
Yes.
It goes on in sec, in the same section, section B, with more and more detail.
Right.
Bottom of the page.
Right. And I, and I have one last question I'll ask, and that is in 160, this is page, well, it's 167-10-10 exception. Line number 148 on the document I'm reading from. Do we really exempt or accept the BPW from this, these requirements?
Now, what, what?
Is that your intention?
Well, that's what the code currently says, but what we've said is with the exception that they must obtain a permit at no charge. So they still have to, um, they, they still have to get a permit.
Right. I understand they have to get a permit. My, I understand they have to get a permit. I understand that part of it. But when it says the provisions of this section shall not be applicable to work performed by the employees of the Board of Public Works, is the, the what section is being referred to there? Is it the whole ordinance or is it the exception section?
I, I get Glenn from a statutory construction, would you say? I mean, they, they shouldn't be exempt from, they shouldn't be exempt from anything except possibly the violations.
Yeah, the exception section should perhaps be in 167-9 versus its own standalone section. It is kind of where, I mean, from a statutory construction perspective, this would say the provisions of this section, and I would think it means section 167-10, because it doesn't say this article or this chapter.
Right, right.
So I think it's 167-10 if you're, if you, if you have a strict constructionist view. But if it's, if it's the violations and penalties section, then we should probably make it a G.
I think.
My idea on that was to add the word cost in front of the word provisions for the, I felt like, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I felt like what we were saying was is that the board wouldn't have any responsibility for the costs associated with it, but they would still have to meet the technical standards.
Um, can I?
Well, I think that needs to be explicit then.
Can, if I, if I follow this, 167-10, because I had developed a question about it too. If they have to get a permit, that's under 167-5. And then 167-6 and 7 go on to talk about what the permit requires. And it requires them to comply with the entire ordinance. So it's really kind of circular. But you don't have, you know, it doesn't apply to them, but it applies to them through the permit.
Well, so it's possible, I mean, if you, if you look at it without the underlined, which is the addition, the, the language of the code as it exists today says that work performed by BPW is exempt. And I think, you know, it's possible we could just take out 167-10, or we could move it up to, or, or we could, 167-10 could be that the, the board is exempt from any fees or, or escrow associated with it.
That makes sense because it's circular as it stands now in two ways. First of all, it says the provisions of this section, as Tim pointed out. And then it says, except they got to get a permit, and that brings everything back in. So I think your solution, Emery, is a good one.
And, and I have one last question. Rob, are you finished?
I am. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question. Is, and Emery, do you anticipate, actually two questions. Do you anticipate that we will continue, it's my understanding that the city uses what I will call a blanket permit system where one, one permit is, is, can be used for multiple crossings, multiple disturbances. Is that, am I mistaken?
No, that, that, right now, right now, a permit is required for every street break. The, I think the issue is that we don't have a, to, to date, we have simply issued the permit and there's been no associated inspections to make sure that the, the work and that the patching is completed to the standard. So with this, one, we're developing that, we're filling that gap that exists. And then the other, the other thing is that we're updating the specifications of the, the various, you know, cuts and, and restoration.
Okay, so if a, if BPW had to do, just using them as an example, if, if they were doing maintenance on a street and it, they were working at several different addresses on the same street, they would be expected to have a separate permit for each address. Is that correct?
Well, so typically that, that, that's not how the board would do things. Like if they were replacing water services and a water main on an entire street, I think we could find a way to do that under one permit. I, again, I think from our perspective, the priority is that it's being done in accordance with the specifications and that it's being inspected to make sure that the restoration is done properly.
Right, and I can appreciate that. I'm just, I would just like to make a recommendation at this time, if you would accept that. And that would be, I would suggest that a And that would be, I would suggest that a separate permit be required or issued for each location. So that it's easily, more easily managed and tracked. Uh, rather than a, than what I would call a blanket permit. That is just a suggestion I'll make. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Uh, Presley has had his hand up. So Press, you've joined us. If you want to comment, I see you're on.
Well, I, I was wondering about one sixty-seven, ten, too. Uh, so were we exempt, was the board exempt then up until now? Uh, from, from complying with this ordinance? Is that, is that what I'm understanding? And um, then I was really questioning why they, why you felt it necessary that they obtain a permit now? Is that just to make sure they're following this? I mean, it's, it's, it's another piece of paperwork that they have, have to do.
Well, with the, with the number of street breaks that, that we have that have not been restored in accordance with the specifications, we need to make sure that we're inspecting all of the street breaks and, and making sure that everything is restored properly.
Okay.
It, it really has created a real problem on the streets.
This gives you a way of doing better tracking then of what's.
Yes. Yep.
So, okay.
Okay.
I was just wondering why it wasn't there before. And that's the reason.
Right.
Okay. Is there any further comments? Okay, I think we have a comment about changing the six, one sixty-seven, ten. Glenn, did you capture the, the idea of changing that?
I do. Yeah, I have it.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the, this one sixty, chapter one sixty-seven with the changes that we have discussed here this evening that Glenn will incorporate?
And that, that change is basically that the board is not subject to permit fees and bonding requirements.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But still has to get a permit.
Correct.
So a motion regarding then?
I'll move to approve the resolution with the correction, Glenda Stow.
Okay. Second, thank you, Bonnie. Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries five. Zero. Thank you very much. Uh, moving then on to item E five, presentation of possible action on a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Architectural Review Commission regarding the establishment of criteria for review of historic artifacts in the CH Cultural Historic Zone. You'll see a memo in your file, uh, which has been posted on the website regarding the activities of the this are at the H Park Group and their review of a question we had posed to them. And their conclusion that after full discussion, they determined that based on its research and experience, there was no need to modify the current ordinance to encompass a historic artifact. Is there any discussion of this item? Okay.
I mean, do we need to do anything with this?
No.
Yeah.
We don't need to do it, just need to accept it.
They were just getting back to us because we asked them a question, so here's our answer.
That's correct. So there's no need, there's no action needed.
We just thanked them for, uh, for taking.
Look at it and, uh, you know, I'm sure that there'll be other questions along that we will ask and take the really carefully look at as well. So I appreciate their due diligence and helping us with that. Then moving on to F one, new business presentation of possible action, a request to participate in the two thousand twenty-one Denrec mosquito abatement program. This is an activity that we engage in every year. Uh, and this is a, a spray that is done to help, uh, contain the mosquito, uh, infat- infestation that we usually have over the marsh. Uh, and it's a project that, uh, the state asks us to provide an endorsement on. So, uh, it's been very effective over the years. It's normally done in the very near future and, uh, we need to just approve it. Unless there's some discussion regarding.
I, I just wanted to make, ask the question, is there a notice that goes out on the, the red alert? When the days of mosquitoes spraying is gonna occur?
We don't send anything on code red, but if the public wants to get the notifications from Denrec, they can, they can sign up through the Denrec website.
Anne Marie, is that something?
We can start sending out an email blast when we get the notifications.
They can send out an email blast.
I, I don't know that I would do it on code red, but we could do it as a regular email blast.
Yeah. I think we could do that.
Wonderful.
Anne Marie, just out of curiosity, how much notice do we get from Denrec ahead of time?
Sometimes it's the day of.
The, the issue is they have to do, and obviously it's an aerial spray, so they have to do it when the weather and the flight conditions are correct to, to have it done. So as Anne Marie said, it's frequently short.
Janelle just sent me a message. She can put something under news and announcements on our website so that people can sign up directly with with Denrec, so they can get them directly from Denrec, but we can also start sending them out as an email blast.
Thank you.
Good. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this with that recommendation?
So moved.
Thanks, Bonnie.
I move.
Andrew, I think you have a second there first.
I'll second.
I think Andrew's already got to beat them, so.
That's okay.
You could burn it or whatever.
Poor Tim's like three seconds behind, I think, on his buffer.
This is bad internet connection.
All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any? All right, motion carries. Then moving on to item F two, is presentation of possible action on an ordinance to amend Lewis Municipal Code, Chapter one eighty-three, uh, vehicles and traffic article two, parking. Uh, this is, uh, the result of several complaints we had last summer regarding uh, people putting things in the road to prevent people from parking in front of their homes. Uh, we've had all kinds of things used as well as other things that have occurred. Uh, we've had some feedback this afternoon regarding this and I've, uh, and we've had some concern expressed by, uh, people who are feeling that they don't have any off-street parking and that they uh, they have a handicap member of their family and rely on the parking. The question raised about whether or not we could designate something uh, for, to cover those, those kinds of situations. So uh, Glenn, you want to comment on those kinds of designations? I know we've done some designations both in the city and over on the beach, uh, for various reasons, for people who've had uh, medical issues, uh, or aging issues, uh, to accommodate this. Uh, what are your thought about how we would go about doing this?
Well, there's instances of that, but generally they are subject to, you know, in- individual consideration by city council. Again, it's, it's city property and city land, uh, that, that you all as a council have authority over. So to the extent somebody is going to encroach upon that land, they would need to obtain a, a license agreement or some other form of agreement from you as a council to be able to do that. Now, obviously there is no such thing as adverse possession or squatting on city land that will give you rights to that, that land, but generally those accommodations are made on a, on a one-by-one basis. This is why we've addressed them previously.
Mayor, may I suggest that, uh, that we ask Glenn to draft such an accommodation for the person who wrote to us today, a- along the lines of the one that Bonnie spearheaded on Market Street, East Market Street. Uh, which I thought was very successful.
It's been very successful. Yeah, well, I, that was, that's, that's where I was headed wrong. Uh, in this particular situation, we did hear from one member of the community who has a family member who, uh, is dependent upon, they have no off-street parking and no ability to create off-street parking. And so they're dependent upon the street parking in front of their home. And they currently are, uh, using a handicap sticker, uh, which obviously doesn't provide, uh, any security that if they drive away, that the space would still be available for their use when they came back. So I think we'd have to do a, uh, an, an individual consideration of that request.
I, I've heard similar concerns.
Ask a question.
Okay, Andrew, go ahead. You had the four.
Um, I, I mean, yeah, I got, I got the same message as you, Mayor, but also I, I got uh, emails and some phone calls around the, the ambiguity of a, of an item or a device and, and the implications that that could have in terms of what we're considering.
Okay, we, we've got, uh, we've got a couple of hands up here too. We'll have to hear from.
So I, I, I don't know that we have, if we'd be in a position tonight to kind of define, you know, these things, like, what's the, I, I get the spirit of it, you know, the idea that we're putting out cones to restrict parking, but I don't know that it's specific enough as to what constitutes this action versus I mean, a, a tree.
Well, technically, people aren't supposed, under the, the new right-of-way policy that was adopted in two thousand eighteen, people shouldn't be putting a tree in the right-of-way either.
But they exist. So that's what I guess.
Right. But I guess.
Head, prospective rather than retrospective.
Yeah, this isn't, this is effective upon adoption if we adopt it, but you know, maybe we can put something on there saying, you know, this is a forward-looking thing. It doesn't deal with existing instructions and the city will continue to construct our way it has been uh, on a case-by-case basis. I mean, we, I, I think mainly what we know is going on here are the, the temporary things that are put out around the city to save a parking space or, or keep people from going into them. I mean, I think that's the, that's the gist of this, right?
Right. And what our parking enforcement supervisor, Dennis Crawford, has said is that, you know, if we're adding the enforcement to, to, um, do the parking enforcement on, on the streets of Lewis Beach. They wanted something in the code that they could cite as, you know, of the violation if they're gonna move something that's on somebody's property. Or, or that's.
Way.
Yeah.
The objection I heard was a lack.
Ask a question.
Of, of a definition of a device or an item, uh, in terms of what, what did we mean by that? I think we're all, we're all thinking along the same lines that it's, you know, mostly some kind of item like a ladder, a chair, a cone. Uh, but in reality, this would apply to landscaping materials as well.
And Mayor, aren't we also, um, well, I don't know if we are or not, but there are at various places, people have put up signs without city permission saying of parking reserve, reserved parking for blank, blank. And I assume that would be we, I don't think the ordinance clearly addresses that. I think we want somebody who thinks they need a sign, like the person who emailed us today, to kind of the city and gets and get that, uh, and not have people just put them up, held or skelter.
Oh, that's.
Well, the other signs that are popping up are signs denoting the fact that there's a driveway there. We've heard that people are parking in front of people's driveways because they don't know it's a driveway. Then they're gonna put a sign out that says, here's my driveway. Then they're gonna get a ticket because they now have a sign for telling people where their driveway is.
I don't think that would.
That's not in the, that's not in the public way. I mean, that's on their private property, right?
Well.
They put a sign on their property.
Right. The, the, the driveway crosses over the, the public right-of-way. I, I don't think that, I mean, and, and let me pull the chief in. I don't think under any circumstances would we keep some, somebody from doing something to make sure their, their driveway doesn't become blocked. Chief, do you want to weigh in on that? Chief, you should be able to unmute.
Yeah.
I'm on mute.
There you are.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've seen all manner of, uh, things for sure. Uh, also problematic is was just mentioned are the, or the signs that are actually posted on private property, but give the appearance of no parking on the right-of-way area. Uh, so that's a bit problematic for us to deal with as well. Um, and I guess that I would ask that the, uh, this ordinance, if, if it's adopted, gives us a path forward of, uh, being able, you know, we don't have the ability to store larger items and sometimes there's quite a bit. And, uh, we'd like to be able to discard them.
Chief, there's only so much they're gonna be able to fit in that new electric car. We got them.
That's true.
We have lost and found, don't you?
All right. Uh, we've got, we've got several hands raised. You got a question first, uh, Glenn, Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, I do. And I'm gonna probably ask, uh, our short timer, Bonnie, to a- answer it. Bonnie, are you listening? Uh, I understand that you are responsible for the signage that's on East. Pardon? Wake up. Uh, I understand that you're responsible for the signage on East Market Street that provided some kind of special parking accommodation for some of the people there. I'm, uh, help me out in my memory here. Uh, is that a how is that restriction? Is that a twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven kind of restriction for that space? Or how is that, uh, how is that space managed by the sign?
Let me, let me take you back. First, first off, I'm not responsible for it. Council's responsible for it. It was council vote. But what happened was. We had some complaints about parking issues, so we did a canvas of, I think it went all the way up to Michigan. And then we cross-checked against who had street parking, who had alley parking. Then we figured out how many people in the city of Lewis were full-time residents over, I think seventy-five years old was the criteria. It might have been seventy, ten. I don't remember. It was seventy or seventy-five. Thank you. So full-time people who didn't have the opportunity for off-street parking and were over a certain age. And we came, that netted us exactly two locations. Um, where, so, so those two locations were granted because they really had no options and they met the other criteria, were granted, um.
Right.
A si- one spot. So there, there are a total of two spots.
That's a designated. Those become designated spots in this right-of-way, right? Okay. Thank you very much. I just wanted that clarification, how that worked.
Okay.
Now, after, after we did that, we had a couple of inquiries, um, from people who you know, understandably saw the signs and said, well, that looks pretty darn good. And nobody, nobody else who, to my knowledge, nobody else who has, uh, approached the city about it has met the criteria.
No, right. Okay, so we have.
Thank you very much for that explanation.
We have three members of the, of the public who've raised questions, raised their hand. First, I think up was Ellen. Can we bring her into the conversation? Ellen, would you identify yourself?
Everyone, um, my name is Ellen Austin and I'm a res- a resident at Missouri Avenue in Lewis Beach. Um, I'm at number nine. And, um, one of the things that I noticed about the ordinance, um, aside from the fact that it's unclear what a device or an item is, and I think that has to be defined before you can vote on it. Um, the synopsis talks about a temporary obstruction. But the ordinance doesn't have the word temporary in it. And so I think if what your goal is, is to remove a temporary obstruction, you should include that in the ordinance and also maybe define what you mean by temporary, something that can be, you know, easily moved or, you know, whatever. But right now, the way the ordinance is written, it's inconsistent with the synopsis. And I think that's part of what's creating some of the unease. Um, certainly on the beach, having just gone through the whole parking issue, um, where many, if not all of us, found that we were encroaching in different ways. Um, and, you know, what to do about encroachments varied from bulldoze gardens to let people have driveways. Um, and so I'm sorry. So, and, and, but my, so my main point is, uh, it's unclear, it's vague as to what a device or an item is. Those could certainly be pretty much an item is any. And also, if you mean to say these are temporary obstructions we're going to move, then you need to say temporary in the body of the ordinance. Thanks very much. And, and also, since I have the floor, thank you all for your service. Thanks very much. And and also, since I have the floor, thank you all for your service.
Ellen, thank you very much for your thoughtful comments. Okay, I think we have Lewis Beach Civic Association would like to speak. Please identify who you are that's speaking. You bring them up, Ellen. Great.
Hi Ted, this is Mr. Mayor, excuse me, City Council.
How are you?
Good, good. And again, thanks for all for laboring through this evening. It's been quite an experience here on the listening side. Are we very brief? Everything Ellen said was exactly right. But also, and I hope you will consider those before passing on the ordinance. But also, it makes reference to the device or item to make a public parking space unavailable to all members of the public. I think this has been demonstrated at the Lewis Beach Parking Committee. There's quite a bit of confusion about where are the public parking spaces on different streets in Lewis Beach? And if we're going to have an actionable item involving the place where it might be helpful if people knew where these parking spaces were. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, and then we have Mark Corneal, who also raised his hand. Mark.
Here.
There, sorry.
Hi, Mark Corneal. My wife Maureen and I have a home at eight Rhode Island Avenue in Lewis Beach. And I I wholeheartedly agree with the previous two speakers. And we went through the survey and stakes, you know, all over people's property. And there's landscaping mailboxes and many other and and many other items throughout the beach area that would be considered based on the survey to be within the right of way. So that so our concern would be that anything within the right of way, based on the way the ordinance is written, could could be determined to be, you know, blocking parking as as I believe Kevin had just said. So I also believe that this requires more study and discussion with the community prior to.
And.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mark, and you appreciate your concern. I think we've we've heard considerable requests that we study this further and we define object and device and whether it's temporary or permanent structures or permanent things here. I would suggest that we consider tabling this until we can better define this. I don't know what your thoughts are.
Eric, if I might, I mean, it's council's pleasure, obviously, but I don't want this record to be left with people thinking that the way the ordinance is currently drafted, the discussion about looking prospectively is going to create some sort of de facto license for things that are currently in the in the right of way. I don't think that's the intention of this ordinance.
That's right.
Yeah, I I don't have any problem with it with tabling it. But when you guys, I'll be off council, but when you guys take it up, I just jotted down something that just, these are my my parting thoughts. I mean, I I think that this is supposed to be about is both temporary and permanent obstructions. But I wouldn't want someone to say, oh, it just says temporary, so I'll plant a tree or, you know, whatever. So what I would suggest is something along the lines of, as of the date of passage of this section, no person shall place an obstruction, whether permanent or temporary, in an area available for public parking. Something along those lines, so that it's clear that we're not talking about removing things that are already there, but rather keeping this from recurring. So those are my only thoughts when you guys think about this in the in the future.
Thank you, Bonnie.
And I would add a thought to Bonnie's that we also address signs indicating that parking is unavailable in a public parking area. That would also pick up on the chief's concern that you can have a sign that's in your private property, but it seems to apply to the right space in front of it.
Then you got those comments, the good comments from you, Bonnie. Thank you very much.
I've got them. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, great. So with that, I think we can defer on this. We can bring it back up. We may be ready to bring it back up at our May meeting. But clearly, this request came from the parking enforcement and the chief as they look for better guidance how they can go enforcing parking situation on the beach. And I think it's important that we provide them some direction. That's clear. Hey, thank you. So then I think we need to move on to item F four, which is presentation of possible action, a proposal from Dell dot to impose parking restrictions on Cape Penelup and Drive. I believe you all have a plan from Dell dot where they are proposing to ban parking on both sides of Cape Penelup and Drive from the ferry out to the state park. We already have a ban on parking on the beach side of Cape Penelup and Drive. But this would impose parking restrictions on both sides. I would note that this area was heavily parked. Well, it's been heavily parked every year when we've had fireworks. But also, it was heavily parked last summer as a result, in part, I believe, as the state parks curtailed or reduced their overall admission or parking by to sixty percent occupancy, which meant that people who were used to coming to the park and finding a place to be able to come into the park and park still wanted to go to the park, but they couldn't get in. And so I think that drove this parking situation even more to become more severe or more pronounced than what we had seen in prior years. So this is a proposal from Dell dot. And I I know, Rob, you live in the area. You might want to comment on it.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to, and I'd like to make a comment and then ask the the chief to weigh in on a couple of things, too. The I wasn't aware that the city banned parking on the bay side. They certainly have never, the city has never enforced that. Last year, it may have been a unique year, but maybe not because the population pressure on the beaches is growing. There were a few days when the park was closed because it was full. And a number of cars parked along the bay side of Cape Penelup and Drive, off the bike path, on the grass, but still within the right of way. And those people. This would ban those people from parking there. I didn't see any obstruction to the bike traffic or the pedestrian traffic from those cars. And those people may have wanted to use the beach at at Cape Shore. They may have wanted to go into the park. I guess I don't get the point of telling them, yeah, it's very convenient there, but you can't do it. I don't know why we want to be a dog in the manger on the parking that is available for people who want to use that part of the beach. What I wanted to ask the chief about, though. Two things. One is kind of technical. The map that is in our packet from Dell dot refers to a. Where is it? A point, it it goes from the park to a point approximately one hundred and sixty east feet east of the center of the intersection with the terminal access. And I think that means it. It doesn't affect the area in front of the terminal itself. But I'm, I don't, I haven't measured one hundred and sixty feet, so I don't know. And I the chief probably hasn't either, but may have a better sense.
Dell dot doesn't have jurisdiction beyond this area. I think that's the.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so it would mean it would match the area in front of the ferry terminal. So it wouldn't affect people in the park in front of the gate to the ferry terminal. The then the my only question for the chief is, chief, do you see a problem, a safety problem with having people park on the bay side on the beach side of Cape Penelup and Drive if they're not on the bike path?
I'd say there's still some concern for safety, just because people use that shoulder for bikes and pedestrians. So so I have a little bit of a concern.
But if they if they're told not, at least when I saw them, which was on maybe two or three days when the park was so full, all the cars were in the grass. I don't know if. You know, maybe I missed going there sometimes when there were when a car was infringing on the bike path. But that would be a subject for a ticket, wouldn't it, anyway?
Yes.
So, Mayor, thank you, chief. So, Mayor, that's that's really my my concern. Now, Emery points out that we the city already bans parking on that side. And we, for my point of view, to take effect, it would require us to amend our ordinance. But unless there's some problem, I don't see, then I don't understand why on the bay side we would want to ban parking for people who are turned away from the park.
Other comments from the table.
Mayor, I did have a lengthy discussion with the Dell dot Traffic Studies section today to get some of their information on this. And I've got two screens going and one's kind of blocking the other, so. They they did get feedback from the park. The park did not have any objection. That's obviously not the city's concern. I'm looking for, okay, so. They, what they determined was that they believe that it does cause an obstruction to the operation of the road and the the bicycle lanes and that there are some associated safety concerns. Let's see.
Is that statement made for both sides of the road, Emery, or just the bay side?
No, they said both sides. They had concerns with both the the traffic operation and the the traffic operation and and there, you know, some associated safety concerns, mainly with the fleet free flow of traffic because of the number of cyclists that we have in that area that, you know, are coming out of the park, going to the ferry. Not all of the cyclists use the the separated path. Especially, you know, we we discourage people who are higher speed cyclists from using that that separated path. Those were some of the the issues that they they brought up when we spoke today.
What are the other concerns? There's a speed limit along there. There's thirty five miles an hour.
Right.
Then, you know, people do, there's no parking allowed on Freeman Highway either. I think that's one of the concerns. So what is your, what is your pleasure here, council? Shall we go back to Dell dot, discuss it further? This is a proposal that they have to ban it.
Yeah, they they just, they kind of set out. I guess last month they sent out this was their plan. Did we have any objections to that side?
That we need.
If I'm not mistaken, this was generated by a particular person on aesthetic grounds.
Well, that's that's not what they, that's not what they shared with me. But I don't know the basis of of any complaints that they got. I I know, you know, what they told.
I have a question. I have a question. I'd like to direct to Rob. Rob, if I understood correctly, did you speak only to the bay side of Cape Penelup and Drive? That would be the north side of Cape Penelup and Drive. That you are not objecting to cars being parked on that side? What about on the south side of Cape Penelup and Drive, you know, the marsh side? Do you have any any opinion about that?
I think it's largely unsuitable for parking. It it there's vegetation, there's sometimes a squail quite close to the to the shoulder. I think cars would be more tempted there to poach onto the bike, the the shoulder. And in some places, there's simply not enough room to get to the off the shoulder. So. And and I haven't seen people parking there when the park overflowed, they didn't use that.
So they only park on the north side or the bay side of.
That's correct.
Open Drive is what you're.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Okay, good.
I would I would make a motion to oppose the action that they propose and to continue and to allow parking on that. Because as Rob said, it's usually it's temporary and it's not that often. And.
Yeah.
Are you suggesting both opposing both sides of the parking of of Cape Penelup and Drive or just one side?
No, I I agree with what Rob's saying. I think there's no, I I don't see an issue with parking on the bay side of Cape Penelup and Drive for folks who are intending to use the Cape Shore Beach or to try to overflow parking into Cape Penelup and.
Okay, so that would. That, yeah, that would require us changing our ordinance as well because we're.
That's a question I have. So I'm looking at, maybe I'm looking at section one eighty three forty one, right? Cape Penelup and Drive East. Is that what am I in the right section?
Right.
Because it just says from Savannah Road to a point where the extension of the southerly boundary line of Pilot Point intersects with Cape Penelup and Drive. And then it says.
Right, this is a fact.
Cape Penelup and Drive West from Savannah Road to Freeman Highway. I don't see.
Which which section are you in?
One eighty three dash forty one.
Okay, hold on, it's.
This, yeah.
It was a different section. It's under, it's thirty nine, no parking.
Section thirty nine.
It one eighty three dash thirty nine, Cape Penelup and Drive on the north side from a point thirteen hundred feet from the intersection of Savannah Road to Cape Penelup and State Park. So I haven't measured thirteen hundred feet, but I I suspect that that's somewhere around the ferry terminal.
Yeah. Actually, it may only be going.
So it's from maybe inner. That's from the that's from the intersection of Savannah and Cape Penelup and Drive from that point.
No, no.
Is that correct?
No. It it's it reads awkwardly, so it's from a point thirteen hundred feet from the intersection of Savannah Road to Cape Penelup and State Park. So that the beginning point is the thirteen hundred feet from from Savannah Road, and it goes all the way to.
Got it.
Park.
So then you're probably.
Thank you.
Correct. It's the other side of the ferry terminal.
Right.
So then, if we were, if we're going to propose to Dell dot that we allow parking on the bay side of Cape Penelup and Drive from the ferry terminal to State Park, we would also have to change our regulation.
Yeah, we can do that.
We can. I'm just, that's, that's, let's just know what we're doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a part of me, I'm going to, I'm going to share something with you all that is going to really surprise you. But it's late at night and I feel like sharing. This is going to show Tim's libertarian side. And I would really like to think that people have common sense. And I'd like to think that if they could see that the terrain is so rough that they cannot or should not park in an area, that we don't need to put a sign there to tell them that they don't need to park there. And if, from Rob's comment, it sounds like people have already discerned that parking on the south side of Cape Penelup and Drive is not suitable for parking. So why do we want to put a sign, have a sign put up there as well?
All right. Well, I think libertarian speech really shocked you all.
So so I'll share a little bit. One summer I worked as a hotel maid.
Okay.
In Oregon, and I can tell you that people on vacation don't always exercise the same degree of common sense that they do presumably at home or behaviors. I'll add that. So I I think the problem is that.
So I, I, I think the problem is that it would be great if we could, if we could trust people's common sense. But people on vacation, they can't find a parking lot, they're shut out of, they're shut out of the state park. They, they, they may do things that, that they wouldn't ordinarily do. And so a sign suggesting they not do so, I think is, I agree with you. I hate sign clutter, but sometimes you gotta have it.
Yeah, I think we all do hate sign clutter. But I think the other piece of that is, we're living in a time when vehicles are, every vehicle you see advertised is talking about their ability to go on all terrain. So a lot of people are thinking that they, they bought a four wheel drive vehicle so they could park wherever they want. So I agree with you. So, all right. So having said all of that, I think what we need to do is first communicate with Dell Dot that if we're going to oppose the, this parking proposed ban on both sides of the street and see where that, how that goes.
So, whoa, wait a minute. I, I thought we were only opposing the prohibition on the north side.
On the, on the prohibition on the north side, we're allowed to, yes, we could do that.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I, I thought that
We only opposed it on the north side, then we, but we still have to change our regulation to allow it.
Right.
We would need to change our regulation to read that we, we're also being consistent with what Dell Dot's proposing. We would ban it on the south side.
Which we don't do now.
Right, which we don't do, but we're going to allow it on the north side.
But be a little careful about banning parking on the south side, because that's where hunters park during hunting season. In the little, the little cleared areas, there's a few cleared areas where they can pull off.
So are we proposing that we don't parking on either side of the road?
Yes.
What is the proposal?
The libertarian wins.
Can I ask a question? I didn't, I didn't know whether Dell Dot had said anything about that they need the shoulder for maintenance purposes, like cutting grass or anything like that.
They, they really talked more about the use of bicycles on the shoulder and that it's, it's marked as a, as a bicycle lane.
Well, it is a state road, so we can, what we can do is propose, but
Yeah.
Do we want to put this in front of the bike committee?
Meanwhile, Andrew, so that Dell Dot doesn't start enforcing this. You might want to just communicate
They won't enforce it. They'll, they'll put up the signs and have the police enforce it.
Yeah, but I think what we need we need a two pronged approach here. We certainly, like, that committee, but we can also, we need to start communicating with Dell Dot so we don't get ourselves in a situation
Right.
where they've already gone something and then we're asking to reverse it. But we, I think it's fine to take, you know, Andrew, if you want to take it as a bike pet committee, I think that's a good idea. Rob, you, you make a motion on this one then, Rob?
Sure, I'll, I'll move that, thank you, Andrew, that we ask Dell Dot not to proceed with their plan to ban parking on the north side of Cape Henlopen Drive. And that they bear in mind the need of hunters to pull off at certain spots along the south side during hunting season.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. All in paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Do we also want to refer this to the bike pet committee for comment?
Can Andrew just take it to the bike pet committee?
Of course he can, but if we want to Okay, I think it should be a point of discussion by bike pet anyway. See what they have to say.
Yeah, good.
All right, I think we have gotten to the end of this agenda. I don't think we have any executive session discussion, discussion items this evening. So I think we're at a point where we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Bobby was all the way from New Hampshire, thank you. So we have a motion I heard you from yelling and from So thank you all for being here. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 All right, good night, thanks.
Charlie voted for adjournment.
Charlie, I think Charlie was ready to adjourn a little while. Bye, guys.
Bye.
See you tomorrow.
Bye bye.